Welcome to the school board meeting of Independent School District 271 Bloomington Public Schools. Tonight is Monday, June 22, 2020. It is 7:00 PM. The school board meeting tonight is being conducted remotely via Hangouts Meet. It is being livestreamed by BCTV and will be replayed for the usual BCTV replay schedule. There is no public recognition tonight during this Hangouts meeting. However, if you wish to contact the school board, please send an email to schoolboard@isd271.org. So we'll start with our roll call tonight for attendance of board members. We'll start with... Start with Director Bibi.
Here.
Director Bennett?
Here.
Director Olson?
Here.
Director Sorum?
Here.
Director Starks?
Here.
Director Stega?
Here.
And Director Corman. So we got all board members present tonight. And we'll move into approval of agenda. And I'd like to make a motion to... for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Is there a second?
Chair Corman, with an amendment?
Oh, the amendment. Yes, sorry. Okay, so first I'll make a motion to amend Part A of the agenda to include a resolution to renew Tom Bennett's appointment for another three-year term as a representative for the intermediate district 917 Board. And I believe you all have seen this change in the agenda in your emails today. Okay, check your emails and you'll find it there. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any... only got any... Sorry, I think I'm getting an echo here. Are there any questions or comments? Director Bibi, we thought about bringing this resolution today because Director Bennett had completed the term that was part of the term that Director Brenstrom had before. We need to renew it, okay? And that's why we're bringing it today. It needs to be renewed. So any other comments or questions regarding this motion? Hearing none, then let's vote. All those in favor of amending the agenda, Part A of the agenda, to include this resolution, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stega?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. So that Part A of the agenda has been amended. So now let's go into the approval of the full agenda. And I'd like to move approval of the full agenda.
Second.
Very good. All those in favor of approving the agenda for tonight, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stega?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. The agenda has been approved. Next, we have... in the agenda, we have recognition. And what we have today here, it's a school board resolution endorsing safe and supportive schools. Director Bennett?
Yeah, I'll go and read the resolution. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached resolution endorsing safe and supportive schools.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. And now I would like, before we go into discussion, I would like to read the resolution. So this is a school board resolution endorsement of safe and supportive schools, June 22, 2020. Whereas the education and safety of the children of Bloomington Schools ISD 271 are our top priorities. And whereas the Bloomington School Board is committed to the success of students by providing a safe, secure, and supportive school district. And whereas, as leaders of ISD 271, we are compelled to speak out in response to recent events that have called attention to racist attitudes and actions and other forms of systemic racism, which has a profound impact on our students, families, staff, and community. And whereas, students and families are expressing fear, sadness, and concerns for their safety, heightened because of intolerant rhetoric. And whereas, we believe each of us individually and collectively are responsible for nurturing anti-racist educational learning environments, where all children are respected and valued for who they are, regardless of skin color, gender, identity, sexual orientation, ability, or disability, immigration status, religion, or any other category. And whereas, providing a safe and supportive school environment that ensures the physical and emotional safety of students and staff creates the conditions necessary to foster academic achievement. Now, therefore, be resolved Bloomington Public Schools ISD 271: One, condemns all hateful speech and systemic racism directed at Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Two, commits to fostering a school environment that promotes respect for and curiosity about all cultures, affirms the equal humanity of all members of the community, and rejects all forms of bullying and discrimination. Three, commits to instituting school board goals and policies in district educational curriculum that reflects the values expressed in this resolution, and to reform current policies through an equity lens. And number four, pledges to refresh its strategic plan with an emphasis on our safe and supportive schools plan. Okay, so before we vote on this resolution, any discussion, comments, questions? Director Bennett?
Yes, I just kind of want to give the rest of the board and the viewing public a little background as to how this resolution came to be and why this is before you. It was a couple of weeks ago, Chair Corman and I were discussing that we felt we needed to say something after the tragic events of George Floyd. And we were inspired by Superintendent Fujitaki, how he put out a letter condemning those actions and also standing in solidarity with our students and families, especially our BIPOC community. So we felt that the school board, as educational leaders, that we needed to say something. And we believed in the philosophy that the school board speaks with one voice, and we speak by passing resolution or by passing policies. So we wanted to have a resolution. So we included Executive Director of Community Relations Rick Kaufman into the conversation along with Superintendent Fujitaki and kind of told them what we wanted to put in there, that we wanted a resolution that was worth more than the paper was written on, with actual measurable steps and action statements that we're going to make. We're not just, you know, making a lot of platitudes. We're actually going to commit to change. And by saying things like putting these into our school board goals and to looking at our policies and practices and curriculum through a lens of equity, and so that we can hold ourselves accountable, the administration accountable, but also the community could hold us accountable. That's what we wanted to put into our school goal. So when we review our goals, we can take a look and say, okay, how much progress have we made? Have we done anything? So Mr. Kaufman took our ideas and kind of made a couple of different drafts and went through different departments and collected more ideas. And I guess there's like five or six different iterations. And then he brought it back to Chair Corman and I, and we had some other ideas, which got put in there. And then we didn't want just to spring this on the rest of the board. So we kind of, we split up board members, where I would call some and the chair would call some. And we didn't, obviously, we couldn't say, do you support this? Because that would be, you know, open meeting law violation. But we wanted to kind of give people the... know what's coming and let them know that if they have any questions or any concerns, to talk to the superintendent. So that if there was any like language changes we wanted to do, or anyone wanted to do, they could try to address those last week. So we wouldn't get to the board table and have a whole amendment free for all, and we're sitting here wordsmithing. So that's kind of the process. I don't know, is that Director Kaufman, if you wanted to add anything about the process of how this went through different departments or anything?
Thank you, Director Bennett. I've just said that the number of departments, including the Office of Educational Equity, Illinois Guardly, and Dr. Jenna Metzler were very, very helpful, as were a number of other cabinet members and the superintendent as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Bibi? Director Bibi, your microphone is off.
I actually did not get this information until late in the week. And I have taken some time to think about it. And, you know, I really, I think a lot of this resolution comes down to really loving kids and really loving them and caring for them, no matter where they come from. And with the diversity that we have among our students, that there's going to be times when there is not going to be agreement. And that that doesn't necessarily mean that that's discrimination. And I know there are times within certain groups that were listed in, you know, our whole different group of people that we listed, of student types of students we have, that there hasn't always been that. And I asked Rick Kaufman about adding the words religious beliefs, because a person's belief systems are going to be different from one another, and not everybody will agree on that. There are other times when, just because of diversity, there will be differences of opinion, or there will be differences of perspectives. But we want to encourage dialogue, which brings different perspectives. And because definitions matter, when I was taking a communications class in college, I was taught that in communication, that you can agree to disagree. And I'd like to add that to this. Because under number two, commits to fostering school and environment that promotes respect for and curiosity about all cultures, affirms the equal humanity of all members of the community, and rejects forms of bullying and discrimination. I would also like to add that, and I wrote it out here, so I just say it properly, that in valuing diversity in our schools, we want to allow for discourse where not all will agree. However, disagreement does not equal discrimination. What I found in our culture at large and in schools is that if you do not agree, then you are given a label. And I feel like we need to protect our students from labels that come at them. And for this reason, I'd like this to be added.
Are there any comments from other members? This is our time to have a conversation around this resolution.
I have a... can I ask a question of Director Bibi?
Go ahead.
So you're saying that in that part, you would just like to have the statement, it's okay to just agree to disagree added? That's the only part you're trying to add? Just want to clarify in everything that you said?
Yeah, what would be added is that although not all will agree, disagreement does not equal discrimination.
Okay.
Agree to disagree and still have peaceful relationship. Well, others can ask, but it's part... yes.
Director Sorum?
Yeah, while I agree this is really a profound resolution, and the sensitivity that we have now in our communities, you know, there's always going to be, I think Beth kind of alluded to it, that if we don't get our own way, I'm going to sue. And if we don't, if you don't agree with me, then I'm going to take it to a higher court. I don't know how we can impress on everybody else, other than a document like this, that if you do have some issues, or you do have concerns, there are channels to go through in order to satisfy your particular situation or condition that you find yourself in. So I don't know where that would be. It's kind of like an apology, where all of a sudden, we have a general policy statement, and then we have pages of regulations should any condition pop up.
Director Bennett, you raise your hand.
Oh, just for clarification, is there a motion to amend on the table? Because I didn't hear an actual motion, and there wasn't a second of that motion.
I make a motion that we amend this resolution to add the words, even though not all will agree, however disagreement does not equal discrimination. And we should allow for people to agree to disagree.
Is there a second to that motion? To amend the resolution?
I'll second the amendment for further discussion.
Okay, has been seconded by Director Sorum. For the discussion is open. Director Bennett?
Um, I guess I'll speak in opposition to the amendment. I really don't think that the language adds anything to the actual resolution. I think part of the reasons why the chair and I contacted board members last week was so if people had concerns, that we could kind of work these things out, or if we worked out between the superintendent and Mr. Kaufman before we got to the board table. So that's just my opinion. Obviously, I respect any board member's right to make a motion to amend a resolution. I've done it several times myself, so that's fully within everybody's right. But for this particular amendment, I will be opposed.
Director Olson?
My only concern is that it went through, you know, the various people before coming to us, including the Office of Educational Equity and others who... Is everybody included in the meeting, who was a part of helping create and format this resolution? And would it matter if they did not have an opportunity to look at it again?
Mr. Kaufman, would you please speak on that?
Director Olson, could you clarify your question?
I'm just wondering if... so a lot of people put together this resolution. And so I'm just wondering if it's amended, then does that mean anything? That they... that the same people who helped create it and okay it, are not able to speak tonight to that?
I certainly don't ever want to speak for anyone else. I believe that what was presented is what those individuals that reviewed it and had input and provided revisions, while a majority of them are here, not all of them are. But it was presented to the board as a document that the board... It's really enough up to the board at this point to make whatever changes or no changes as part of its resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. And yeah, there were a group of people that were involved in the language, the process of... within the language of this resolution. Okay, anybody else like speak on this before we vote to approve the amendment? Director Bibi?
I just want to say that although this is a board resolution, not all of the board had really any opportunity to know that this was even happening. I heard from Rick today that this has been being worked on for several weeks, although the board had no idea. And so we couldn't even give anything of information to the chair or the vice chair. On top of that, I was not feeling well over the weekend and did not have time to read it until later on. And there was an awful lot of reading as well today. And I usually take things and I mull them over. And as I was mulling it over, I was thinking of other varieties of groups not listed in the list of different types of students. And I know some students have actually had times where their religious beliefs have been in conflict with somebody else. And because of it, they have been labeled. And it's a put-down, or they've been shunned, and they have not been respected. And I'm speaking up for those students and their families, who have come to me numerous times concerned that while... While they may disagree with other people's cultures, or they may disagree with someone else's religion, or it may be even their gender identity. They can respect them and they can love them. But if they are against that, then they are called names, racist, bigot, other hurtful words. I don't want those in our schools. And I think that's why I am pushing to say that there are times where you can agree to disagree.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Director Bibi. And before we move forward with to all the board members, I just want to clarify that, of course, this is a conversation that has taken weeks, because it's not a conversation that has been easy for all members of our society in the past week. So obviously, it's something that every, all of us have talked about. However, coming to conversations with administration regarding this resolution had happened in the last week and a half. And as you always do, you got this packet with the resolution on Thursday. And in fact, Director Bennett and I called each one of you before the resolution was brought to you in the packet. So there were a few days where we actually asked all of you to please provide some sort of feedback before we brought this resolution today. And completely understand Director Bibi's perspective. And I think that the main purpose of the resolution is that, and it is stated in all the many different words that are in the different points, where we are talking about how everybody is to be respected, how all different points of view are to be respected too. So I think, in my own opinion, I believe that the words that are being used in this resolution are actually calling for that kind of agreement that is already included for all of our kids, for the well-being and the safety of all of our kids and all of our staff members, that everybody's beliefs and perspectives are respected. Before we go into the other board members, I'm seeing raising hands. I saw Director Starks raising her hand. And I saw Director Stega. Director Stega?
I couldn't tell if Heather was going first, or Director Starks, or me. Sorry. I just wanted to say that I believe those examples that we just heard about are covered in this, because religion is covered. And if you're saying they're not to bully anyone, then calling someone a name or labeling them would be bullying. So I do believe it's covered in this already, and they should not be doing that. And we need staff to, and parents and students to step up and check each other and not be doing that.
Director Olson?
That's a very good point. That's a very good point, Director Stega, because, you know, children learn from their parents. And we're seeing a lot of bullying happening with parents. And I agree that nobody should be calling anybody names, and that that has to do with what, you know, Director Bibi is also pointing at. And so, but right now, what I'm thinking is just, you know, we're talking about the pandemic, that all the, you know, being on the various people who are on the front line of this pandemic. And right now, education is on the front line of moving equity forward. And I think that's why, right now, is a critical time to pass a resolution like this. And I hope that it does cover what you speak of.
Anybody else? Director Sorum?
Sure. And as I said, as we read the newspapers and see so much going on, there's so much sensitivity and so much blame being cast on everybody else, I still think this is a good document to have as an educational institution, to let this be known, that we have this up on our walls and the tools, and we have it everywhere else. We have many, many policies, I forget how many exactly, dealing with all kinds of student behavior and staff behavior and other things like that, bullying, harassment, and everything else. So even though I seconded the amendment, I still think that there's an awful lot that the community has to deal with. And personally, we all have to deal with, with our neighbors and with our faith community as everything else, until this gets resolved. As I mentioned to Tom, I said, this was a profound document to come before us at this time. And yet, at the same time, while all this is going on in the world, you know, we have to make a statement, a resolution, create the document that says, this is what we, as a district, believe in and are going to work toward. Now, we're going to have all kinds of issues that are going to crop up. People are going to find lawyers in the woodwork that are going to all of a sudden say, yeah, it didn't have this, it didn't include this, I think we can sue them for this. I think that's the things we're going to have to deal with. And it's a good thing David is here, because all of a sudden, he's going to be writing down all kinds of things to protect us. But overall, I think it's a solid document to state as a school district what we believe in and should work toward. Amen.
Okay, thank you, Director Sorum. If there's no other discussion around that motion, then we'll probably need to move and vote on the motion to change the language. Okay? And before we do that, before we vote, I just want to say one more thing, that I will be concerned about the proposed language, because I worry that by adding that disagreement doesn't equal discrimination may allow for some people to believe that they can say anything if they're told that that is not discrimination, even though it can be a discriminatory comment. So just wanted to be mindful of that. I don't know if there are any more discussion about that or around that or not. Seems like we're good, right? Okay, so let's vote on that motion to change the language for the proposed... Yeah, Director Bibi? You got your mic off. Sorry.
One other thing that Rick and I talked about was... One other thing that Rick and I talked about was to just to change from religion to religious beliefs because it's broader.
Oh, okay.
So there's two different places of language. So one would be the religious beliefs and the other one would be, you know, about the disagreement does not equal discrimination.
Okay, so you're actually bringing two motions for two different changes. Okay, so we got two different motions on the table here.
Point of order, Chair. I mean, we can't, that has to be moved and seconded. It can't just be added. So it might be better to vote on this amendment.
Okay.
And then if anyone wants to amend it after that, do it after this one passes or fails.
Exactly. Yeah. But before that, I'd like to hear Director Olson.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay. So let's vote on the first one, the first motion, which is the change of the language of the second point and the second part of our resolution. So all those in favor of changing the language of that part, please say aye. And I'll do a roll call for that. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
No.
Director Olson?
Okay, so I'm sorry. This is the, just the part that, that you brought up that it could actually to.
Yeah, this is the proposal of Director Bibi to change the language to the second point of the second part of the resolution.
Okay. Yeah, no, I need to see it in writing.
Okay, so Director Bibi, would you like to make that motion again, please, just to make sure that we all understand the language? Your microphone?
The language is that where not all will agree, however, disagreement does not equal discrimination. You can agree to disagree.
Okay. So we'll vote again here. I'm going to go back. Director Bibi, are you in favor of changing the language for this or the motion to change the language?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
No.
Director Olson?
No.
Director Sorum?
No.
Director Starks?
No.
Director Steiger?
No.
And Corman, no. Okay, so we got six to one votes and the motion does now pass. So let's go into the second one. Director Bibi, would you like to make that motion for that other point that you talked about? Your microphone is up.
Under the section in which it states religion, to change it to religious beliefs as a broader term.
Okay. Anybody, any comments on that? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second? Is there a second to Director Bibi's motion to change the language from religion to religious beliefs? It doesn't seem like we have a second. Okay, thank you. So now we're going to vote on the resolution. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the resolution of endorsement and safe and supportive schools, please say aye. Director Bibi? Your microphone is up, sorry.
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Hi.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Director Steiger?
Aye.
Director Corman?
Aye.
Okay, so this resolution has passed. Thank you. And thank you all for your support of our Lumenton students and staff. Okay, so let's continue with our agenda. Since we already approved that change of part A of the agenda, do I need to look for approval of this part A again? I'm looking for advice here.
No, you don't. You've already passed it.
Okay, perfect. So let's go on to part B of the agenda. Okay, we're going to start with the first item tonight is the superintendent evaluation 2019-2020 summary statement. And this is by the school board, so I will let the chair of the superintendent evaluation committee speak, and that is Director Jean Sorum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Chair of the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, along with Heather Starks and Beth Bibi, directors, we developed the evaluation format to be used by all board members for the 2019-2020 school year. After all evaluations were received and compiled, a closed session of the board met on June 8th, where we discussed the evaluation results. As Chair of the committee, I then took the rating results and comments and met with the superintendent to share the results on June 12th, 2020. To summarize, we commend the superintendent for the strong leadership and team building during the 2019-20 school year, the challenging issues of rightsizing the budget, the cabinet and administration transitions, pandemic control and distance learning made for a very trying year. The board now looks forward to continuing to work with the superintendent around mutually agreed upon goals and programs to further close the achievement gap and continued engagement of all stakeholders to further the mission of the school district. The superintendent accepted the summary and suggested our next step is to establish 2020 to 21 goals. And then the superintendent will set his 2021 goals. Now, this process has been started, and part of the superintendent's evaluation for next year will be based on the achievement of his 2021 goals. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Sorum, and thank you to the members of the committee for the superintendent evaluation. Our second item is the start time study research findings. And so I'd like to call Dr. Dave Heistad and Julio Caesar to present.
Yes, Chair Carmen, Board Directors, Superintendent Fujitaki. In an effort to be brief, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Caesar so that he can take you through the findings of the start time study. And then you can have questions and discussion. Thank you. Take it away, Julio.
Thank you, Doctor Heistad. Just give me a second. I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, and everybody else on the call. Today, I'll be presenting the analytic results of the start time study utilizing the 2013 to 2019 Minnesota Student Survey data. To frame the results, the two research questions that we targeted were, does implementing a late start time change have an effect on the amount of sleep students reported in 2016 in comparison to 2016? Pardon me, 2019 in comparison to 2016? And those implementing a later start time change have an effect on the reported grade point average of students in 2019 in comparison to 2016? And that is taking into account socio-demographic information. And I'll show you what information I'm talking about in a little bit. In order to answer these questions, as mentioned, we utilized the Minnesota Student Survey data from the 2013, 2016, and 2019 administrations, specifically for grades five, eight, nine, and 11, covering elementary, middle, and high schools. And in all three administrations, there were over 160,000 students who responded to the Minnesota Student Survey. Five school districts were identified as implementing a start time change to their school schedules between 2013 and 2020. And they are labeled District 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, 4.0, and 5.0. The columns that are highlighted in green are the academic year when the Minnesota Student Survey was administered, and it's usually administered late in spring. In order to have comparison groups, five additional districts were selected to match the aforementioned districts in race ethnicity, EL status, special education status, and free and reduced lunch status. These barriers are what we usually use to identify and select districts that have similar makeups, as Dr. Heistad has referenced before of the challenge index. And these districts are referenced as District 1.1, 2.1, 3.1, 4.1, and 5.1. First, I'll present the results of the recommended amount of sleep change between early start and late start school districts. The analysis used for these results are contingency tables using a chi-square statistic. For the overall analysis of the number of students reporting that they met the recommended hours of sleep, that is, nine or more hours for grades five and eight, and eight or more hours for grades nine and 11. The treatment group, that is, those who had a start time change to a later time, and that no treatment group, that is, the districts with no start change, were compared. The results differed significantly between administration years, meaning that more students significantly reported reaching the recommended hours of sleep in schools with a later start time than students from early start time schools. As you can see, there's an increase of 3% from 2016 to 2019. Meanwhile, there was no change in the number of students reporting that they met the number of recommended hours of sleep for the early start time schools. That is, again, the no treatment group. We then broke these results down by grade, and we compared each grade from 2016 to its respective grade from 2019. The number of students reporting that they met the recommended hours of sleep differed between grades. For grades nine and 11, the number of students reported meeting the recommended hours went up by 4% and by 10%, respectively, from 2016 to 2019. There were no changes found for grades eight. And for grade five, although a significant number of students reported meeting the recommended hours of sleep in 2019 in the late start schools, the percentage of students within their cohort declined from 2016 to 2019. So we only see differences in grades nine and 11. For an easier conceptualization, here are the results in graphical form by district and grade for those who are statistically significant. For grades nine in District Want went up from 29% to 41% of students reaching their recommended hours of sleep from 2016 to 2019. And from grades 11, for District One, went from 15% to 31% of students meeting their recommended hours of sleep. For District Three and 3.1, only students in grade 11 in District Three had a significant positive change from 2016 to 2019, increasing from 14% to 21%. Similarly, to District One, students in grade nine and 11 in District 4.0 had a significant bump in reporting meeting the recommended hours of sleep, increasing 29% to 37% for grade nine students, and 17% to 24% for grade 11 students. And lastly, District 5.0 had a significant increase from 2016 to 2019 from 56% to 63%, but as you can see, no change between 2013 and 2016. Next, mean differences were calculated between the grade point averages for students between administration years by grade. For District One, only students in grade 11 had a significant increase in GPA from 2016 to 2019, increasing their GPA from 329 to a 3.47. All other grades increased as well, but not significantly for District One. District Two did not have any significant changes of GPA between 2016 and 2019 administrations. There were no significant changes for District Three between 2016 and 2019. But as you can tell, all grades had slightly gains, but again, non-significant. Similarly, to District One, only grade 11 students in District Four had a significant increase of GPA from 2016 to 2019, going from a 3.34 to a 3.67. As you can tell, grade nine also had a slight increase, but grade eight had a decrease, a slight decrease as well. And District Five showed no significant changes between all years, except for grade five between 2016 and 2019, who decreased from 3.56 to a 3.37. All other grades went slightly up from 2016 to 2019. Again, to conceptualize these findings, we can see in the graph that students in grade 11 significantly increased from 2016 to 2019, from 329 to 347 for District One. And for District Four, we saw the similar results in students in grade 11 significantly increasing their GPA from 2016 to 2019. Taking all the districts that had time changes between 2016 and 2019 and their comparison groups, mean differences were calculated between GPA for those in the treatment group, again, that is, those who had a start time change, and the no treatment group, again, the school districts with no start time change. School districts with no start time change had a slight and significant drop in GPA from 2016 to 2019 of .03 GPA points. On the other hand, school districts with a start time change had a slight and significant gain in GPA from 2016 to 2019 of .06 points, which translates to an effect size of about .07 standard deviations, which in a sense is a small effect size. Mean differences between start time change and no start time change districts were also calculated by grade. For those in the no treatment group, grade five had a significant drop between administration years, whereas grade 11 had a significant bump in GPA of .07 points. As you can see, grades eight and nine had no changes. For those in the treatment group, significant gains in GPA were found for grades five, nine, and 11, ranging from .08 to about .12 GPA points. GPA for grade eight students reported an increase, but it was not significant, slightly, as you can tell, of .01. In order to see if these mean differences hold, once we control for other background variables, a multiple regression analysis was used to estimate the effect of a start time change in GPA. Districts five and 5.1 were dropped from these analyses as their start time change occurred in 2014 and 2015. So we're really looking at the districts that had a start time change between 2016 and 2019 administrations. In this analysis, free and reduced lunch status, a proxy for socioeconomic status, race, ethnicity, gender, year, grade, and a scale of commitment to learning as a baseline were used as control variables. The findings show that the treatment at 2019 administration was significant, and it had an effect on GPA after controlling for the socio-demographic variables. Now, these findings are noted in the following table, where these are similar to what we saw before, but these are what we call adjusted mean differences, taking into account all the demographic and socio-demographic variables that I just presented. The adjusted mean difference was estimated to be .13 GPA points for districts with a later start time, which translates into an effect size of .15. Do note, though, that controlling for all the aforementioned variables, that no treatment districts also show a predicted increase in GPA of .06, about half the size of the treatment group, and almost one-third of the effect size of the treatment group. These results are illustrated in this graph where the top line shows that These results are illustrated in this graph, where the top line shows the impact of a later start time on GPA from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, and the bottom line shows the comparison districts, those with no um start time change. Now, these adjusted or predicted values, as we call them, were also broken down by grade. Grade eleven for the no treatment group had a difference of point one twelve GPA points when controlling for background variables, whereas grades five and nine had a marginal increase in GPA, as you can tell, they're pretty close to zero on the effect size. For the late start time group, the treatment group, that is, all grades had significant increases in GPA from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, ranging from point one zero to point one seven GPA points. And this basically translated in a point eleven or a point two two effect size. Um, now, these results are illustrated in this graph as well. The blue line is for the late start time group or our treatment group. Uh, the red color is for the comparison groups. Uh, just a quick recap, a late start time was found to have an impact on GPA across all grades, so the blue line across all grades. Whereas for the treatment group, only grade eleven had a significant increase in GPA, uh, whereas grades five and nine had a marginal increase, as you can tell by the lines. Um, in all, these results show that a late start time does have an impact on both GPA and in getting the recommended hours of sleep. On GPA, this association was significant even after controlling for social demographic variables and the skills course for commitment to learning, which translates to an effect size of, as mentioned before, of point one five and ranging from point twelve to point eighteen. Again, this is a small to medium effect size. Um, the last thing that I want to present is how do these results compare to other research studies? Um, so we pulled a few additional studies that we found, and we found that there were still mixed results on the association of start time and test scores and other outcomes. Uh, for starters, a recent longitudinal data analysis found that female students who attended schools with a later start time got on average thirty six more minutes of sleep at night and showed reading test scores that were higher than students who did not attend schools with a later start time. These effect sizes are similar to what we found in our analysis, uh, again, a small to medium size effect. Sabia and colleagues in twenty seventeen found that longer sleep was beneficial for classroom concentration, homework completion, and in the increased probability of high school graduation and college attendance using longitudinal data as well. Um, in a thorough review of the literature, Wallstrom found that uh sleep deprived adolescents are a significant risk for negative outcomes as listed, and including a reduced academic performance uh measure. In a long, uh, longitudinal study by Leonard and colleagues, again, a recent study uh where schools that were investigated were those that moved to an earlier start time. So in our case, we were looking at school districts that moved to a later uh start time. This study looked at schools that actually moved to an earlier start time. And the researchers found that moving to an earlier start time gave rise to absenteeism absenteeism rates ranging from eight percent to thirteen percent, uh, gave a rise to tardiness rates of approximately twenty three percent on average, and as well as higher rates of dropping out of high school. Uh, that is, students in schools with earlier start times were one point two percent more likely to drop out of high school. And lastly, just to include some of that uh research that is a little bit mixed, Henricks in twenty eleven uh using uh some data from ACT in Minneapolis Public Schools um, found no effects of ACT test scores uh when looking at schools that had a later start time. So overall, our results are pretty much in line with previous research findings. Uh, a late start time has a positive yet small effect size or an effect on reported grade point average and in the number of students reporting the reach, uh, reaching the recommended hours of sleep. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Caesar. Any questions? Questions or comments, Director Olson?
Um, did this, did this study directly discuss um specific health issues such as, you know, students getting um monochiosis or anything like that from lack of sleep?
So specifically, our study did not. Um, and other folks, it was just pretty much risky behavior, so uh drug and alcohol use, um, sleep deprivation. Um, there was one study that showed the amount of accidents in the county going up um where uh school districts uh had an earlier start time uh for specifically middle school and high, for high school kids.
That was car accidents, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, and thank you for this uh study.
Other questions or comments, please? Director Storm?
I couldn't remember. I think we've, we've got all of these charts and graphs somewhere. They were sent out to us, and they, they actually did identify various school districts by name.
That's right.
When we did it first, so that was an interesting comparison as we started going through. Does this represent all of the schools that have gone, or is this just a select group of schools within the metro area and outspace?
Uh, so my understanding is that these are all schools that have had, have had a start change since two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year. Uh, there are some schools that have changed their start time now, uh, but they just recently did it, so we just still don't have any data from them. So that includes South uh St. Paul, North St. Paul, uh, West St. Paul.
Right, and it's really a lot of significant data that we have seen now and uh, you know, and to put it back to the committee that's being studying this, you know, to summarize or to get some, you know, not necessarily, this is good stuff, it's not just anecdotal that we've heard about from a variety of schools who either favor it or don't favor it. So this is a good start for gathering this information. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. We understand that it took a while considering the, the issues with COVID nineteen um to get the results of this study. But thank you for putting this together. Director Bibi, you are the chair of the um of the Start Time Committee for the Board. Would you like to speak on that? Director Bibi? Let's see, she turned her microphone on. She's probably having some um technology difficulties. We cannot hear you. I'm not sure if you are speaking. Director Bibi?
Well, Madam Chair, I think Director Bibi has to put her, her camera on too, but let me ask Dr. Heistad. The, did you? Did you just um kind of uh watch over Dr. Caesar? Did you have any direct input yourself?
Yeah, we, we discussed the design of the study, uh, but uh but Dr. Caesar did all the work and uh that I concur with the findings. It's uh, it's a significant but small effect for changing to later start times, and it varies by district and by grade level, but overall, it's a small effect. And one thing that we talked about with the committee was you, you kind of need to think about the cost benefit in terms of making a change like this to see if the benefits would outweigh potential disruptions or um uh transportation issues and costs, so, so um it, it's the kind of thing that you need to put in a context of the whole budget.
Thank you, Dr. Heistad. Uh, I just want to make sure that Director Bibi has an opportunity to speak as the chair of that committee. Director Bibi, are you there now? Okay, she might be having some technology issues. Director Steig, have you had a question?
I just, I just wanted to say that um I received a message from Director Bibi, and she lost her internet connection, but she also has tried to get back with just audio, but I'm not sure if that's not working either, so um, she is having uh difficulty connecting. But I do have a question while we're trying to get her connected.
Go ahead.
Um, well, I found it interesting that fifth grade was included in this because in some districts, in order to have high school later, the elementary has gone earlier. So has there, is there any information to say what are um negative outcomes for elementary students because they had to go earlier in order to have the high school and um possibly middle school students go later?
Excellent question. I'll let Julio answer that one.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so there's a couple of things about that, so um at least from the studies that have moved back, you haven't really seen much differences in, in uh elementary still school kids. Uh, there is a study by uh Dr. Dupree at the University of Minnesota who has looked specifically at the change of elementary school going to a later start time and uh how they did on the MCAs in middle school. And they found very little impact, so there is no uh, no positive thing about it or negative thing about it for, for schools in elementary grades. Uh, what we're seeing here as well in the results, it's up for grades five, you don't really see a positive impact or a negative impact. So it could be that some districts moved back, some districts didn't move uh anything for elementary school students, or some districts did move forward, but at least for what we're seeing here for grade five, they're not really being negatively impacted.
Yeah, there, there are very many elementary schools that have grades. Uh, but these particular schools did have grades for fifth grade. That's how we could estimate the impact.
Director Steig?
Yes, no, I think we were just talking about if they had a later start time. But what about, is there any um study that, because you may have to move elementary kids like an hour earlier than they are now. Is there any, you said there's no impact for later, but is there any change for earlier too? Is, maybe nobody's looked at that.
Yeah, so I think the only study that I saw that did have that um included folks starting in middle school and high school, but not necessarily elementary school kids. Um, and it could be, uh, it could be some of the reasons that uh Dr. Heistad mentioned that we don't, uh, some schools don't collect GPA on earlier grades, so they may not have had a chance to look at those uh facets. But I don't know of any other studies that have looked at, except the, the one from the University of Minnesota.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that uh Director Bibi is back. She's been having issues with her connection tonight, but she was trying to connect from her phone.
Okay, yep, I'm on now. Okay, yeah, any other questions? Well, as a start, time committee, um, we actually expected there to be greater differences and um greater academic achievement. And since we asked Dr. Caesar to um do this study for us so that we could make a decision based on um, you know, real evidence of whether or not early start times um do um bring about a greater academic achievement. Um, I think we learned that, yes, it does, but it's not significant enough for the disruption that a early start time change would bring. And therefore, we as a committee discussed that this is um not something that we should move into at this time. And um, but we are thankful for the research that was done because this could also help other school districts who are believing that this would have a greater impact as well, just like we did, and um then can give some evidence to support what they should do. So we've decided that um as a committee to end it at this point and to realize that research was done and it has given us the answers that we need. So that is about it. Thank you, and thank you so much, Dr. Caesar.
Of course.
Yeah, and Director Bennett, you're also part of the community. Is, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Oh, of course. Um, well, of course, again, uh, Dr. Caesar, thank you for all this, this work. It was, it was really, um, really thorough. And I'm wondering, for those of the people who are watching, the board members that haven't had a research design class, can you explain effect size change? Because I think to a layperson, point one and point nine, those are kind of meaningless terms, so you, can you kind of explain what all that stuff means?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, the easiest way to kind of think about uh an effect size change is when you're talking about a standard deviation. Uh, so a, an effect size change of one that just puts you out a standard deviation, one standard deviation away from the mean. So if we're, like, let's say that we're comparing math uh grades, and we're looking at the, let's say, the SAT, because that has like a really nice five hundred number and a hundred uh standard deviation. So a one uh standard deviation difference or one effect size would mean that a student's scoring a hundred points higher than the group mean. So that would be if they uh, in a program has an impact, that these kids would score that. Now, when we're talking about a point one or a point two, we're talking about like a one tenth or a two tenths of a standard deviation. So if you want to think about it in the SAT point uh as well, let's say you have a five hundred uh score, and we do this late start change impact, and the most that we would see is anywhere from ten to twenty points change in the SAT. So your grade will increase from a five hundred to a five hundred and ten or five hundred and twenty. Uh, so that's, that's kind of like how, how the way that you can visualize a, an effect size. But just to keep in mind as well, though, even though there's a small effect size in education, we usually tend to find small effect sizes like this uh when we're trying to make a, a, a big operational change like this. Uh, for instance, um, effect sizes of about point two to about point three for class sizes are, are found in the literature. So if you're talking about reducing uh class changes from like thirty to like fifteen students, that will be a significant um, a small effect size as well of about point two, point three. But we know that there, there's some type of impact there. Again, not large, but it's, it's uh significant for us to say, hey, it's there, but those ten points in an ACT really kind of like what Dr. Heistad mentioned, does it really warrant all this change if that's pretty much all we're going to get? Um, and just to remember that that's, it is on average. So some students might get higher score changes because of the time change, and some students might get smaller uh changes because of the start jumps change.
Okay, well, thank you. That was a perfect explanation, much better than I could have done, which is why I'd rather you do it. Um, what I thought when we had our committee meeting last week, what was interesting is we, well, we kind of, you know, got in deeper into these numbers and, and we're looking, because if we look at like the national research that's been done, it's pretty much that every hour you move back the start times, it's thirty seven more minutes of sleep, which is considerable. So we're looking at our, at our schools, where our, our high school already starts at seven fifty, so the most we could push it back would be eight thirty, so we're looking at forty minutes. So we kind of looked at those schools that moved their start times by a half hour and see if there's any significant change. And the one that moved, there was one that moved from seven thirty to eight, and they saw, you know, a significant difference. But there was another district that moved from eight to eight thirty that saw really no difference. And we're probably more close aligned to that district, so if we were to make a change from seven fifty to eight thirty, I don't think we would see much difference in, in sleep or test scores. You know, I'm, I'm kind of thinking by Dr. Caesar's research here that eight o'clock is that magic hour? If we could just get to where all of our schools start eight o'clock or later, I think that would be helpful, have nothing start before eight o'clock. Because moving from eight to eight thirty, I don't know if it's really worth changing the whole district and, and then we have to start elementary school. And, and then we have to start elementary school at 7:30 and then middle school at nine. It's just really throwing a lot of change when we're already having a lot of change because of COVID. So that's kind of when Director BB was saying that the, the committee was recommending no change at this time. I think we were kind of in the little to no change at this time recommendation. But that's also, that's the recommendation of the committee. But this is a board decision, so it's kind of kicked to the board on what the board wants to, wants to do from here. If we want to continue, if we want to see more data, see more options from transportation, to see what type of, of options we could come up with that wouldn't cause any budgetary impact. Or if we, I don't know, so it's up to board members to, to see where we go from here.
Director Olson?
Well, so I was thinking that with all that is going on, I was thinking the same thing that Director Bennett said is, do we want to add more change when there's already enough change going on? And then I also double plot that over and I was thinking that, or would this be the time to do it because the students are coming back to everything being new? So, you know, it wouldn't be, maybe they, they aren't knowing what to expect coming into the school year. So maybe that change wouldn't be such a drastic time to do it. I don't know. I just, I'm just putting that out there for discussion.
Other board member? Director Bennett?
Yeah, I just, I just want to clarify that no matter what the board decides tonight to move forward or not, we're not talking about making changes to the 2021 start time. So if we were to, you know, compile more research and more data, more study, it would be 21, 22 school year or later that we would even start having that conversation of changing start time. So I don't want people watching at home thinking that we're going to be changing start times in the fall because it's, we're more than a year out.
Okay, yeah, sorry to confuse the subject.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. Anybody else? Any other comments? Questions? Director Steigaf?
I'll just say I agree with the committee's recommendation that we might, that we should wait. We just have enough going on. So I would agree that this is probably not the time.
Anyone else? And I'm also part of the committee, so I join in that recommendation as well. And also considering the fact that to go through this process, we will need to have feedback from our stakeholders. And the current COVID-19 situation makes it really challenging for us to have that in place for that to happen. So any other comments about that? No? Okay, well, Dr. Caesar and Dr. Heistat, thank you very much for all your help. And yeah, for, for bringing this, the results of this study to the board.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move into our next item. And it is approval and ratification of the 2019-2020 master contract between Independent School District Number 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, and Bloomington Food Service Association. Would someone like to read the resolution, please? Did somebody raise a hand? Oh, Director Olson, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and do that. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approve and ratify the 2019-2021 master contract between Independent School District 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Bloomington Food Service Association.
Second.
Okay.
Steigaf?
By Director Steigaf. And I'd like to call Mary Burris, Director of Human Resources, please.
Okay, Chair Carmen Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the school board. I am bringing to you the food service contract. This was historical in that we won totally through Google Hangouts and the first time that we've done negotiations that way. So that was an interesting format and I think it worked pretty well. So what this contract did, we did agree to a 2% increase for, to schedule for the 1920 school year and then a one and a half percent increase to schedule for the 2120, 2021 school year. We also agreed to an additional one cent to all longevity steps year one of the contract and then four cents additional to 10 and 15 longevity and five cents to 20 longevity for the second year of the contract. The School Nutrition Association certification levels changed. And so we added a fourth level of certification to reflect the now four levels of certification where in the past we had three in contract. Previously agreed auto network pocket maximums, health insurance changes that were done through the LMC or the insurance committee and housekeeping changes. So those are all of the changes to bring forward to you. Any questions?
Questions? Let's see, no questions. And I am, oh, Director Bennett?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you and the, and the unit and the committee for, for all the hard work on this. I'm sure that the meeting over Google Hangouts was, as you said, it was different at work, but probably some challenges. And so I just want to thank everybody's effort.
Yeah, I, I, both sides really tried hard to be motivated and think about solutions and get it done. Yeah.
Yeah. And I am the board representative for that negotiation unit. So I truly appreciated the process and the kindness on it and the kindness of the people as well. And it was very interesting to be in that process, you know, from a virtual platform. So that was my first time in a negotiation online. So thank you, Mrs. Burris. Okay, so let's vote. So all those in favor of approving this resolution to approve the master contract, please say aye. Director BB?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Corman, aye. This resolution has been approved. Thank you. Moving into the next item. We have vendors and rates for district insurance 2020, 2021. Could someone please read it, read this resolution? Well, then I can't see you. Did I see any hands? Would someone like to read the resolution, please? Director Starks?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the vendors and rates for district insurance for the 12-month period from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, per the attached memo. One, RAS First Dakota Identity Company Workers Compensation Insurance Policy. Two, Kraus Anderson Insurance Control Workers Compensation Claims Management and Loss Prevention Program. Three, Markle Insurance Company Blanket Accident Policy, Special Risk for Registered Volunteer Workers. Four, Travelers Fiduciary Liability for Self-Funded Health Insurance Plan. And five, Hartford Fire Insurance Company Esra Bond.
Is there a second?
Second, Sorum.
Thank you, Director Sorum. Mrs. Burris?
Okay, Chair Corman Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the school board. This is a resolution that we also bring forward annually. It's our renewal with our various insurance vendors that we use for the district purposes. Really, the only thing that I will point out, most of the renewals were pretty minor as far as increases. They were either zero increases or fairly flat, like a 1% increase. The one thing to note is our workers' compensation policy. We did have a renewal. We did have a 22% increase. And I know we're discussing about, more about that in district and with Kraus Anderson and how we will proceed moving forward. We did have a few big years as far as work comp payout, you know. So their risk obviously has gone up. So you can see that reflected in their increase. I know we're working hard at trying to come up with ways to decrease accidents and, you know, get people return to work programs. And we do have a very good return to work program in the district. Some of these injuries that were more costly were injuries that one, no one could have controlled or foreseen or, and they could not come back to work. So there wasn't like a return to work that we could really even work out. So, so unfortunately, we've had a couple in the last couple of years. So any questions about the renewals other than that?
No questions? Okay, let's see, no questions. So all those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Director, I'm, I'm going to start with Director Bennett this time.
Aye.
Did you say aye?
Aye, yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director BB? B, oh, yes, hi, yes. And Corman, aye. This resolution has been approved. Moving into our next item, we have a session, please. Revised Policy 503.1 School Attendance Areas. Would someone please read the resolution? Director Steigaf?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 503.1 School Attendance Areas.
There a second?
Second, Sorum.
Okay, Director Sorum had seconded this resolution. And I'd like to call Dr. Jenna Mitchler, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Corman Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. So tonight, this policy is coming before you with no changes to the actual policy itself, which is quite brief. You'll see, there is one change that's being recommended to the resolution, which is to reduce the number of students that we allow to be enrolled in each of the two high schools when we're looking at inter-district transfers from a difference of 75 students to a difference of 50 students to help us with some of our planning. You might remember this is something that we discussed a little bit about during the, the rightsizing, the budget work this last fall. We also made a commitment, the policy committee, along with the administration, to continue coming back to this policy over the next several years and on a regular basis as we continue our work with Safe and Supportive Schools to review and revise.
Questions, comments? Okay, with no questions, then we proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Let me just grab my pen here. Let's start with Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director BB?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. This resolution has been approved. And we move to our next one, which is the computer is going slow today. Sorry. Okay, Revised Policies 701 Budget Process. Could someone please read that resolution?
Sorum, Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves revised policy 701 Budget Process.
Second, Steigaf.
Thank you. Mr. Rod Zikovich, Secretary Director of Finances for Services.
Chair Corman Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This policy is usually looked at every year this time of year for the sense that it's tied to the budget and the budget process. The change, no real change in the actual policy itself, but within the regulations, we made some changes within the regards to the section that the board recommended that we had a minimum fund balance for operating capital, food service and community education. We changed the food service from a 15% of expenditures to a 10%. And then also, we just identified that the general fund is responsible for all these funds if they should go below the amounts that the board has set where they recommend where those fund balances are. One other change is with our CFAC Citizen Advisory, Finance Advisory. Instead of having it report to the superintendent, it would be reported to me and then I would be providing reports to the board.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Director Starks?
So as a member of the policy committee, I had a chance to ask Rod this question earlier, but I was wondering if we could talk about it publicly too. So I had, my concern was I wasn't comfortable changing a fund balance just because of COVID-related situations, because of, of the increased food service connections. But I had asked Rod to kind of explain if this was a beyond COVID decision. And so if you'd be willing to share what you told me, that would be great.
Sure, Director Starks. What the process has been over the last few years, we have been spending down some fund balance within the food service budget. Partially is there was a change by the federal government back in 2011 that required us more healthier foods, different menu changes. We've been making those adjustments over the years, which, as everybody knows, the fresher items and the rest are more expensive. So we've been handling that. So this was a, a planned spend down. It was a little more significant than we thought, but it was planned that this was coming over time.
Okay, other comments? Or questions? Hearing none, then we're going to vote on this resol, resolution. So all those, all those in favor of approving this revised policy, please say aye. Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director BB?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Corman, aye. That's a seven, seven votes, so this resolution passes. Okay, moving to our next one is the Revised Policies 701.3 Fund Balance. Would someone please read this resolution?
Madam Chair?
Director Steigaf?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 701.3 Fund Balance.
Is there a second? Okay, was seconded by Director Bennett. Mr. Zikovich?
This is another policy that we look at during this time of year. The only real change to this policy is the purpose. We just shortened it up to clarify the real meaning of the purposes to follow generally general governmental accounting standards, boards, guidance for our fund balances.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? Director Olson?
Okay, I'm not positive that this is the time to bring it up, so stop me if it is not. But so through reading, both through the budget, you know, in order to vote on these tonight, through reading through the fund balance and the budget process, it's all very complicated. And I know that there are a lot of people who would like to understand finances better. And I noticed in the one, in the one policy, there was a part on there, let's see, just in the budget process, F1, 2, and 3 that discussed our role is to work to increase public awareness of the district's financial concerns and lobby for adequate funding, et cetera. So my thought was that maybe we could discuss having an online type of outreach effort, an online class to explain the funding budget and the funding process for the community and for the community to ask questions. So that's something I wanna bring up in a work study.
Okay, would someone from the committee like to speak? From our policy committee?
Um, I think that that's something that we should probably have a larger conversation about in a work, work study. I don't know that I mean, I don't know if that has anything to do with putting it in the policy. Not that it's a bad idea or anything, but I don't know if that's something you wanna put in the policy.
Right, and we can always bring that conversation back as part of our community engagement conversations.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Anybody else, any other questions before we vote? It doesn't look like it. So we're going to vote. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Start with Director Starks.
Aye.
Director Stegaf?
Aye.
Director BB?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. That is seven votes in favor. The resolution passes. I think we have some echo around. I'm gonna ask everyone to make sure you got your microphones out. Thank you. All right, we're going to the next one is revised policies 707, transportation. Can someone read it, please? Director Bennett?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 707, transportation.
Second, Stegaf.
Thank you. Mr. Zikovich?
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I also have Tim Reebach, our Director of Operations with us tonight regarding this policy. The change in this policy are mainly due to clarification of resident students that are attending programs outside the, their school boundaries. We wanted to make sure that we clarified those different pieces of the policy within. There was some unclear type of information within. We clarified that and then also through the help of Director Bennett added some some more of the language with non-gender specific language that we updated in the policy also.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? Okay, doesn't look like, okay, so we're ready to vote. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Director Stegaf?
Aye.
Director BB? Director BB? Direct, Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Corman, aye. Director BB?
Now, this won't work.
We can hear you, Director BB.
Oh, can you? Okay, aye.
So this is seven votes to approve this resolution. So it has passed. Okay, the next one is okay, you correct me if I'm wrong. Is that the fund balance one? No. Hold on.
It's the consultant services.
Consultant one, okay, thank you. We have a lot of them today. Okay, the next one is revised policies 726, consultant services. Someone please read that resolution.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 except re- accepts revised policy 726, consultant services.
There a second?
Second.
That was Director Bennett was seconded that resolution. Okay, Mr. Zikovich?
This is a policy that's in place for, as the districts uses consultants to help us plan for different projects and they're asked that they, the district can't be using those same consultants to do the work itself. So they can't say you can only use this type of project to do, for example, a roofing and then hire the company that only has that type of roofing service because that's what the specs were for it.
Questions? Comments, questions? No? Hearing none? Okay, all those in favor of approving this resolution for policy 726, please say aye. Director BB?
Not here.
We can hear you. Director BB?
You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Cause the call told me it left. It's all a mystery to me. Aye.
Thank you. Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson? Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stegaf?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. I think I went through everyone, right? Okay, so that is seven votes in approval. Okay, our next one is committed fund balance categories. Director Olson?
Resolution for Board to adapt. Let's see, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the following committed fund balance categories for the 2019-20 fiscal year. One, wellness dollars. Two, band uniform and instrument replacement. Three, staff development. Four, athletics and activities. Five, site department carryover funds.
Second, Stegaf.
Thank you. Mr. Zikovich, you're there again.
As was mentioned, Ian, policy 701.3. Each year at this time before the end of the year, we need to to set up committed fund balances for the end of the year of 1920s actuals, financials. So what we've done is these are the the five that are left out there. These are funds that the board has committed to different groups to be able to put dollars aside going from year to year to be used for a specific purpose.
Comments, questions? Hearing none, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of approving the committed funds, please say aye. Director Stegaf?
Aye.
Director BB? Director BB? Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director BB? Director BB? I see you have your microphone on now. Okay, Corman, aye. Director BB? Okay, having those issues, I'm gonna count it as abstained. So we got six votes in favor. The resolution passes.
I think, I think, oh, maybe not. I thought I saw that coming in.
Director BB, are you there? Yeah, she's not. Okay, the next one is the right sizing the budget 2020-2021, middle school athletics. Director Bennett?
Yes, I'm having some technology issues as well. For some, whatever reason, the board pack is not loading up on my computer. So I'm gonna read this from my phone. So if you see me looking on my phone, I'm not on Facebook. I'm reading the resolution here. So be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves reducing middle school athletics by $75,000 for right sizing the budget 2020-21 and approves the student participation fees of $145 for middle school sports, track and field.
Is there a second?
Second, Sorum.
Thank you. Mr. Zikovich?
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This was a resolution that after our board presentation on June 8th, the board had a study session on June 15th to discuss part of the issue of middle school athletics and how middle school athletics would be handled. We did not do a resolution to actually make the adjustment to the budget for middle school athletics. So this is a the budget for, or the the resolution to make that adjustment similar to the other adjustments that were made early in January.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Director Bennett?
Yeah, well, first I wanna thank administration, especially Superintendent Fujitaki for trying to find alternatives because this was part of our right sizing the budget back in January and and the board was a little apprehensive of of cutting middle school sports. So we wanted him to find different solutions and he worked really hard on on trying to find the solutions and you, the administration was able to for for some of the things, but then COVID happened and kind of messed everything up. So that's kind of why we have some intermurals for some of the sports and some of the other sports can go to the high schools, but we really couldn't find another option for the the track and field. And I mean, the original thought was trying to partner with the Bloomington Athletic Association. But then COVID happened and so really, we kind of want to give it another year. And to try to keep this part of middle school experienced so that, you know, students would have the option of track and field. But just knowing that we're still gonna be making budget cuts and next year we're gonna be making budget cuts. So this is might just be a one year fix and next year we might have to make some other changes. But I just wanted to, you know, throw out my support for the administration because they they worked hard trying to find alternatives and trying to find something that the board wanted. And this was the the, I would guess, the, I would say, the best solution that we could come up with.
Any other comments? Director Starks?
So again, I'm, I wanna echo Director Bennett's comments that I do really appreciate all the hard work that was put into finding solutions. I, though, am not still comfortable with where we're at with this, especially with the unknowns of the next school year. I think making any changes right now is a little overwhelming. And so while I appreciate the the solutions that were found, I I'm not quite confident this is the right time to do it.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing no other questions or comments, we are going to vote in this resolution for middle school athletics. All those in favor, please say aye. Director BB? Near back.
We can see, but we can't hear you.
We can see you. But your microphone shows on. It's on. Okay, we'll come back to you. Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks? No. And Director Stegaf?
Aye.
Director BB? Okay, she, I can't yeah, the thumbs. Okay, it looks like an eye. Okay, just have, making sure that we have witnesses.
She definitely said aye.
Yeah, she said aye. And Corman, aye. So the resolution passes with a six aye vote and a no vote. Okay, thank you. And going to our next one is the adoption of 2020-21 budgets. Could someone please read this resolution?
Madam Chair?
Director Stegaf?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the proposed 2020-21 revenue and expenditure budgets for all funds.
Is there a second?
Second, Sorum.
Thank you, Director Sorum. Mr. Zikovich?
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is the looking for the approval of proposed budget that was presented on Monday, the 8th at the board meeting. The only two changes with this are the $75,000, which we just talked about in the prior resolution. The other is that there was an adjustment of $1 million to the Capital Projects Fund to help with the planning and startup of the online school for next school year.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Okay, I don't see anyone raising a hand. Oh, maybe Director Sorum? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just had a question. It's interesting, a different structure than it has been in the past. So I mean, presenting it in a single format like that is really helpful. Without going through several slides. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, we're ready to vote. So all those in favor of adopting this 2020-2021 budget, please say aye. Director BB? She's going with the thumbs up. Thank you. Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stegaf?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. Okay, this resolution passes with seven votes. Okay, coming to the next one is the resolution stating the intention of the School Board to issue general obligation bonds 2028 to finance alt facilities projects. Someone please read this resolution. You know, everyone is eager to read it. Director Olson?
Okay. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 271, state of Minnesota as follows. The School Board hereby finds and declares that it is necessary and expedient for Independent School District 271, the district, to issue its fully registered general obligation alternative facilities bonds. The bonds pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 123B, Point 59, Subdivision 3, and Chapter 475, as amended to fund a portion of the costs of the following projects, as included in its tenure facility plan approved by the School Board and the Commissioner of Education and related financing costs. Miscellaneous deferred maintenance projects at various district facilities, as included in the district's approved tenure facility plan. The bonds would be issued in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 26. Let's see, is that 26,285,000?
So.
Dollars? Wow. The district will conform to all aspects of the attached extract of meeting minutes and exhibit A.
Is there a second?
Second, Sorum.
Thank you. Mr. Zikovich?
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is part of the process that we brought the board at the end of May of our tenure facility plan. This is the financing structure of it. What we usually do every two years, we sell bonds for a portion of our alt facilities. And then a portion of it is goes through our levy as what is considered pay as you go. So so much per year. The reason why we're doing this earlier than we expected, we were thinking about doing this probably in January or February of next year. But because of interest rates being as low as they are right now, we thought prudent to do the bond sale, which will probably take place at the end of August to the first part of September.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Thank you. Comments, questions? It doesn't look like there are any comments or questions. Okay, so we're ready to vote. Okay, so all those in favor in approving this resolution for bonds, please say aye. Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
Director BB? She's an aye. And Corman, aye. So seven votes and this resolution has been approved. Okay, coming to the last one, we have donations. Someone please read the resolution.
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts donations as indicated in the background in the amount of $24,527.84.
Second, Steiger.
Thank you. So Mr. Sipovich, this is the last one and then you get a break. This, tonight was your night.
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, a couple of sessions ago, the board decided that we were moving donations to Part B of the agenda. What this just is, is all the donations that have been committed to the board over the last month period of time. These will still roll at the end of the, the board meeting, all the documentation of thanks to all the people that have donated to the school district.
Thank you. Comments, questions? No questions. Okay, so all those in favor in approving this resolution for donations, please say aye. Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
Director BB? She's an aye. Director Bennett?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. This resolution has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Sipovich.
Thank you.
Next in our agenda, we have School Board Member Ambassador Parents. This is a 2020-2021. That's in, if you've seen in your list, we have the names of the schools. And if you notice, the schools where we're going to be ambassadors, representatives from the board. And as you can notice, there is no difference from our previous year, you know, and, and the consideration was for this was the fact that because of COVID-19, we did not have an opportunity to be in the assigned schools that we had. So we saw the need for, for changing, for making a switch of the schools when we hadn't had a chance to really be in the schools that were assigned previously to that. So are there any comments or questions about that? Anything, anybody? No? Okay. Okay, so we're good with that, right? We don't need to read it? Okay, good. Next to our agenda, we have School Board Member Reports. Who would like to start with your report? Director Bennett?
Well, yeah, I'll go ahead and start it off. So obviously we had a policy committee meeting and we did that last week and I think put us to 25 policies for the year. So we, we met our goal of, of doing 20 policies. And at the end of the, the meeting, I gave the other committee members homework over the summer that if they wanted to recommend any policies to be changed, to let me know by August. And I also thought that based on us passing that resolution earlier that we're going to be looking at policies through a lens of equity, I kind of want to open that assignment up to the entire board. So if there's any policies that you think that the committee should look at, you should let myself and Deb know by August so we can make the agenda, our process of the, doing the policies review. As Deb kind of runs that, she looks at what we have to do every year. So that takes precedence. And then we look at what are the policies that are the oldest, that haven't been reviewed in a while. And that's kind of how it works. And then what administration is recommending changes? So if there's any other policies, let us know. Also, I just wanted to say on Friday, my daughter and I took part in the matter of March that went from Kennedy to Jefferson. And it was led a lot by current and former students. And it was really well, well attended and my daughter had a really good time. She enjoyed walking down the street. It's a long walk from Kennedy to Jefferson. But it was a very supportive community. I was very happy to see a lot of our teachers and parents and principals that are out there walking and supporting our community. And they closed the, the police closed 98th Street, the whole route. So there'd be cars parked at the intersection. And I was just amazed at how many people were parking their cars and getting out and honking and, and waving and showing their support for, for Black Lives in, in Bloomington. And it was just, it was just a wonderful event. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Olson?
As you know, Chair Corman, I attended the virtual re-imagination education on June 17th, along with you. And they discussed, or we all discussed visions, challenges, and urgent actions needed to build an equitable and excellent education for all students. The discussion encompassed collective input from students, parents, community members, school leaders, and researchers to ask what was, what was working and what wasn't working. And what stood out for me was the request that students do have input in, in decisions and that, that would include students and even the younger grades. They said that the, the students in elementary school, they have a lot, they have a lot of opinions and they're valid. And that we should include, include them when doing surveys and whatnot. And I, that stood out for me. What else stood out for me was guest speaker Peggy Flanagan's, she was a formal, former school board member. And she suggested that while the school board has always been tasked with presenting the district to the community, that we need to start presenting the community to, to the school district. So I thought that that was, you know, something to, for us to think about. And speaking of doing that, Director Bennett, as you spoke of, several of us did attend the, the march put on by students, the peaceful march from Kennedy to Jefferson. And that was presenting the community, I believe, to the district. And, and that was in support of racial justice. And I felt that, that I was very moved by, I was very moved by it. So that is all.
Thank you, Director Olson. Director Steiger?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the Education Foundation met. And as most of you know, there will not be a golf benefit this summer. And those funds that the Education Foundation gives out are for things like teacher stipends, scholarships to many of our students, helping students that can't afford lunch to pay for the, those lunch debts. So all of those things are still very much needed, probably maybe even more this year than other years. So they, there were members there that are stepping up to do donations. So they will be doing a match that you can look for in the community to look for. I think that there are board members that will, will have, I don't know how the donations are, you know, going to come in, they were going to work on it. So they'll have a set amount that board members are, are going to donate to match. And so hopefully the community will help them reach, reach whatever that matches so that we can help replace some of the funds that would have come in through the golf benefit. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you. Anybody else? Director Starks?
So I just wanted to let my fellow board members know and the public that is watching that the House Education Finance and House Education Policy Committees are going to be hosting some informational sessions coming up. The first one is this Wednesday, the 24th of June from 9:45 to 11:15. They're all virtual, so anyone can watch. And the first one is going to be focused on, all three of them are going to be focused on stakeholder voices. And this one is going to be on students and parents. So I thought folks might be interested in finding out and hearing from different experiences about distance learning for parents and students, they're looking for what their experiences were and then what some, both challenges and successes. And then what their concerns are, or maybe some suggestions for fall. So I find, I think it'll be really interesting to hear what, what comes out of those sessions.
Yeah, thank you, Director Starks. And if you are able to, please share those links with the school board and also with, with Deb Bunkel so that she can share with the rest of the administration. Director BB? No, we cannot hear you because your phone is actually off now. So you're going to need to mute your sound in your computer and turn on the sound on your phone. Anybody else while we're waiting for Director BB? Okay, still, we don't hear you. Sorry. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so, but we're waiting for Director BB. Oh, there she is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh. Oh, great. I feel like I've been doing a lot of virtual meetings and it's been really good. And I also did the Remant in Minnesota, three-hour event. And I took five pages of notes and checked some things that I think might be beneficial within our district as we talk about safe and supportive schools. So hopefully that'll work. So anyways, thank you. That was great.
Thank you, Director BB. Happy to be able to hear your voice again. And I was also part of the Reimagine Minnesota Conference. This is a conference that, that is hosted by Minnesota, oh my gosh, Association Metropolitan School District, AMSD. And a very, very powerful and moving conference. And I'm not quite sure if that, that is going to be shared in their AMSD page. But if it is, I will invite you to take a look at it. And regardless of it, please take a look at the documents of Reimagine Minnesota that you'll be able to find in the AMSD website. The conversations were really powerful and it was, I can tell you that for the very first time in all those years that I've been attending those, those meetings, I heard, I heard leaders, school board members and superintendents and other people talking very strongly about how important it is that we support all of our students, all of our students. And we address the different issues that contribute to the inequities in our school system. So really deep conversations in regards of how education needs to be looked at from a different perspective now, especially after, after COVID-19 and the recent events that have taken place in our, in our country. So an invitation for you to take a look at those documents. And of course, my, my dog has something to say now. I don't know if you can hear her, but now she's barking again. So if anybody, there's nobody else that has any board member reports, I'm going to move to superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Corman. For my report, I'll be requesting the board to schedule four study, four sessions. First, administration requests a motion to establish a study session of the school board on Thursday, June 25th at 6:00 PM. The agenda topics to include board and superintendent goals for 2021. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Sorry. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of approving this motion for this meeting, please say aye. Director BB? She's an aye. Bennett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sorum? He has indicated, yes. Sorry?
Aye.
Steiger?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. Okay, so this one passes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Administration requests another motion to establish a meeting of the school board on Monday, June 29th at 7:00 PM. Agenda topics will be the adoption of the board and superintendent goals for 2021. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, that was Director Steiger, all those in favor. Oh, Director Starks?
So I just wanted to just let my fellow board members know, I will not be able to attend that meeting. I, I'll prove it. It's not, that's not the problem. I just wanted to let everyone know I won't be there.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. So all those in favor in approving this meeting on June 29th, please say aye. Director BB? That's a yes. Bennett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sorum?
Aye.
Starks?
Aye.
Steiger?
Aye.
Corman, aye. This, this has been approved.
Great. Thank you. Administration requests a third motion to establish a closed session of the school board on June 29th, following the end of the school board meeting that night. And the topic will be negotiations. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
That was Director Steiger who seconded this motion. All those in favor, please say aye for this meeting on July 13th. Director BB? Bennett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Starks?
Aye.
Sorum?
Aye.
Steiger?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. Okay, this one passed.
Finally, administration requests a motion to establish a study session of the school board on Monday, July 13th at 6:00 PM. Agenda topics will include the return of, to school information. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second, Sorum.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of approving this, this meeting, please say aye. Director BB? That's an aye. Bennett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sorum?
Aye, now that was a study session, right? A July, study session. Thank you. Aye.
Steiger?
Aye.
Starks?
Aye.
And Corman, aye.
Thank you, Chair Corman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, superintendent. Okay, so we're come to, yeah, we're coming to the end of our meeting. If there's no other business, then I will call for motion for adjournment of meeting. All those in favor adjourning the meeting, please say aye. BB? She's an aye. Director Sorum?
Aye.
Bennett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Starks?
Aye.
Steiger?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. And following this meeting, we'll be meeting for a study session. So we'll have about eight minutes. Please come back in eight minutes.